Hey, test one, two, one, two, three, testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, one, two, three, testing one, two, three. Test.
We can hear you online now.
That would be mine right here. Are you available to start?
Is that request going to me? I'm sorry.
I didn't get started, Chris.
Okay, sorry about that. Hi, Chris Carl here, programming manager at Clark County. Today before you is a preview on the work session for what will be a request in two weeks' time for support of our transportation improvement program and how that specifically comes via our capital facility plan. Next slide, please. So the agenda, the purpose, the purpose will be for consistency from the capital facility plan to the tip, or more specifically, how it originates from the Clark County Comprehensive Plan or Comp Plan to the CFP. From there, we take that program into our tip to develop our projects. So you'll see the CFP and the tip mapping as well as the CFP tip overlay where those projects, the current projects at least that have brought into the tip program are currently in our, in our program. We're also going to summarize our transportation improvement program construction schedule, both our current recently completed projects as well as our future projects, our schedule and our steps where we are, including the requests before you today and as well as two weeks' time. And then a summary of what our requests will be at the hearing in two weeks. Next slide. A little bit of the purpose, how setting up for the comprehensive plan, an RCW and a Clark County code requiring a type four process to amend the comprehensive plan. The tip process is also a type four process which includes a request from approval from the planning commission. And next slide, please. This will be a flow chart of how that flows from the comprehensive plan to the CFP, the tip, starting with the Growth Management Act, the Council of Clark County Comprehensive Plan, excuse me, considers the arterial atlas sub- area circulation plan largely outside of what I do, where Public Works gets involved is once the capital facility, 20-year capital facility plan is created, we then take those projects or the ongoing projects, I'll demonstrate the difference between the two when we get into the maps. And we create our six-year transportation improvement program, which also includes our one-year annual construction program. It's just the first year of our tip. Details mostly funding that goes in and funding sources and the like. And from there, we create our individual capital road projects or CRP, our individual transportation projects. Next slide, please. Here is a snip of our tip map. The tip map and the CFP overlay as well as the CFP map were separate maps posted online. If you want me, I could jump back to those at the end. For now, I'll just keep it brief. This is a summary of our active projects in our six-year tip, our 2025, 2030 tip. The red and blue projects are both projects that are direct listed from the capital facility plan. The green projects are ongoing programs which are not mapped on the CFP map that you'll see. However, the programs themselves are listed in the capital facility plan. From there, what we do is we take our, the CFP, the red and blue projects and we prioritize them based on various scoring, safety, traffic and the like. We prioritize them into our program and bring them in. You'll see the main area there towards the top, our 179th Street corridor, which is going to be our next big phases of projects and I'll detail those construction schedules when we get to it. Sporadically thrown about are the green projects, various sidewalk projects, safety projects and bridge projects. Next slide, please. This slide is going to be a snip of the overlay between the 20-year CFP and our six-year tip program. The listing of those CFP projects are there in purple off to the right. But I'm not sure how clear it is on the bigger screen there, but you could see where our current projects, the red and blue and green won't be mapped, but the red and blues will have a purple underlay where they come directly from those CFP projects. Next slide, please. Here's a dive into our construction schedules. Recently, we're in the process of improving the 179th Street at 50th Avenue intersection. That's going to be an interim project. Our next phase of large projects are going to be 179th Street at 29th Avenue. There's a roundabout going in there. And then the group below it is going to be our 179th Street corridor, starting with the 15th to 26th Avenue. An associated stormwater facility, the Whipple Creek Stormwater Facility that will serve it as well as the projects below it, 15th Avenue Improvement. That's going to put a road from 179th bending north to tie into 10th Avenue and cutting off the 10th Avenue, then access to 179th Street. Delphell Road on the west side of I-5, that's going to create widening from 179th Street up to 184th Street and as well as a little segment from Watchdots Interchange tying into our 15th to 26th Avenue project on 179th. Some of our other large capital projects are recently completed, 99th Street's expansion that went from 94th Avenue to 117th or SR 503. 152nd Avenue, which is going to go from Patton Parkway north to 99th Street and the beginning of our 72nd Avenue expansion, starting at 122nd, most likely going to go a little bit north of 133rd, but for now, that's our termini for that first phase of that, of those projects there. And next slide, please. Some bridges and culvert projects that we have. I won't go through them all, but there's some bridge strengthening as well as some culvert project there for Fish Passage. Road preservation projects there, Sunset Falls, we're doing a chip seal. Northwest 78th Street and St. John's are going to be some roadway improvements as well as Southeast Blair Road and the more rural. A rural improvement project at the bottom there is a 182nd Risto Road. We're going to put a roundabout in there, improve flow through that area. Next slide, please. Sidewalk and ADA projects, various school projects, Hawkinson and Truman, as well as our Northeast 130th Pedestrian Improvements Project. Some other sidewalk projects, 68th Street, which is putting in sidewalk infill from Highway 99 east to St. John's. That's a partnership project with the city of Vancouver as well as continuation of our Highway 99 previous commitments to projects that we have put in along Highway 99, starting with 102nd to 104th. That's going to start in 2025. And the next phase of that will be 110th, 117th Street. And lastly, our transportation safety improvement projects are recently completed, 119th, 152nd Avenue Roundabout, as well as a future roundabout at Ward Road and Davis Road. Next, next slide, please. This is our schedule and our steps where we are tonight, October 3rd, Planning Commission work session. The hearing in two weeks on the 17th, we have the Clark County Council work session on November 6th, going before the Development Engineering Advisory Board on November 7th. And the tip adoption, most likely in November 19th, it may slide to one week earlier to November 12th, depending on council availability. The Transportation Improvement Program and the annual construction program have to be adopted before the Clark County, before the council budget is adopted in, in December. And next slide, please. So the crest, request won't be the request tonight, but it will be the request in two weeks' time to seek the planning commission's support of our 2025, 2030 Transportation Improvement Program, specifically for consistency with the 20-year capital facility plan. Again, that'll come before you in two weeks' time at the hearing, the planning commission hearing. I can go back to the capital facility plan tip overlay map if that would serve. Otherwise, I could take questions at this, at this time.
Any comments or questions from planning commissioners?
179th, that's probably the big project for coming up in the next year or two, isn't it?
Yeah, well, they look to be starting in, in 2028. But yes, there's going to be various projects going in through there as well as coordination with Watchdots Big Interchange Project at 179th Street as well, I find.
Is it still on the plan to have roundabouts on 179th?
Yes, there will be the roundabout going in first at 29th Avenue. That'll start next year. The 179th Street corridor will also build a roundabout at Delphell Road, 15th Avenue. There may be some development roundabouts thrown in there as well. But yeah, there will be a few roundabouts going in there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
A question, I'm not sure if you can answer this, Chris, but so we've lifted, lifted urban holds on that on 179th. We're not starting some of these projects or the lion's share of these products, correct me if I'm wrong, till 2025. So are we building in that area or are we waiting for the build outs of the transportation? Can you answer that?
The, I don't know much on the development side. Ken, are you able to?
Yeah, I, I can answer that for you, Carl. So development has started. There were several development agreements that were in place as far as the, the funding prior to the capital projects. So you've seen some of that development happening out there already and it will continue along the corridor prior to and during some of our work. Sure, I guess that's one way to, one way to say it. Actually, some of the, some of the projects that will happen at Delphell and in closer to the intersection, I expect would be further out to 2028 or 2029 before they happen.
I ask this because many of the questions we got on that were based on traffic and, you know, what is it going to look like? And I could just see build outs and then roads not yet done and then people saying you said, and so that's always a concern with me. Yeah.
That's correct. And the, the first roundabout project at 29th will, it's actually, I think, a two-season project. So because we have so much of a grade change there and two new bridges as well. So the, the, as far as concurrency and the traffic to get that node developed first will help. But no doubt, we're going to be under construction for a long time and you're already seeing utility construction in the area. We've already started the work and done a great portion of the work on 50th to widen that intersection as well. So.
Not to mention, I think we have two school districts getting ready to float bonds to stay ahead of that area to Richfield and Battleground. So I just look at it like I know it's going to be what it is, but then I was like, well, we said we're going to build houses or units out there and then I was like, oh, this is going to be great. So, yeah, well. Oh, good luck. Yeah. Any other questions, Jeremy? Anybody? Okay, Chris, thank you very much for that. That was concise. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
About that. Next up, Jose, good to see you again. Just missing you guys and Oliver on the land use alternatives for the DEIS.
This is more of an informational work session with the planning commission. What we'll be sharing with you this evening is preliminary, what I may call preliminary, but proposed land use alternative from our local jurisdictions. As we are beginning to get into the, the next phase in our periodic update, which is the development of the draft environmental impact statement. So let's go to the next slide, just to give you an idea of our discussion this evening. This is an overview of the agenda. Progress to date that we have made and then we'll get into the proposed land use alternatives and we will briefly talk about some of the site specific requests. We did receive tons of it. There are certain site specific requests that are included in what the cities are submitting to the county. Then we'll get into the overall overview, provide you some overview of growth management at guidance, citing certain work and RCW that we have to be mindful of or coming to compliance as we do our work. Then provide you a very brief overview of the State Environmental Policy Act and what is required as the, we have a consultant that will be helping us to do that environmental analysis. And then finally, we'll get into next steps. So let's go to the next slide. You have seen this slide before. It is a general four phases as we go into the update of the, of the comp plan as required by law. These four phases started with what we are calling our project initiation. We started in early 2023 and part of 2024. And as you can see, the check mark items or issues there are ones that has been completed. And we are now in what we are calling shaping of the plan. We started in early 2024 and will likely come to a closure in fall of 2024. But the square circle there is where we are now, review and selection of the alternative to study for the DEIS. And following that, although we are currently just identifying and reviewing our existing comprehensive chapters to identify what potential changes may be made and giving recent bills and recent action taken by the council. So that work will begin shortly. In the review and refinement phase, which will start in later this fall into summer of 2025, we will get into the actual preparation of the draft environmental impact statement. We will have opportunity for the public to review that and provide comments. That process will lead us into the selection of the preferred alternative and the preferred alternative will be the basis for the final environmental impact statement. And with that, we will then get into completion of any update to various chapters in our comprehensive plan and then preparation of the capital facilities plan to support the preferred land use plan. And then with the completion of that, we will move into the adoption process, which as you can see, they require us to do a 60-day notice to commerce. You will be having your hearings and then making a recommendation to council. The legislature amended our timeline. You've heard us say this from time to time before you that we were originally slated to complete this process by June 30th of 2025. The legislature gave us additional six months to December 31st. I can say that we are running behind, but we will pick it up as soon as we get through this phase in terms of the selection of the alternative to be studied. I say that because we don't have any other opportunity to get extension. So we will ramp things up and we will be coming to you with chapters to review in the interim. We're not going to send you the 15 chapters we have. We're going to do that in phases so that you will have opportunity to thoroughly review what we are putting in front of you. But you will see that. Next slide, please. Planning commissioners, you have also seen this, this slide is the adopted population and employment projections. The 2045 population projection that the county is planning for, this is total from 2023, when this was adopted to 2045. The total population of Clark County in 2045 would be 718,154. The council made that decision. The, what that means is that if you subtract your base, in this case, we're using 2023, if you subtract the base to your NDA 2025, it means that the new growth is about 190,754. The total employment projection to 2020, 2045 is 609, 600, no, excuse me, 269,000. That is not the total number that we are planning for, but that's the total employment projection by 2045. So the difference is about 88,100 if you subtract that total from your base in 2023. The county made, county council made a policy decision that we will be planning in a manner that gets the county closer to one-to-one ratio in terms of job to household. Next slide, please. This slide, I know it's very difficult and small to read, but this is the adopted housing allocation. We haven't been before you for a long time, but you have seen this before. You made a recommendation to council. If you recall the conversation about method A and option B. Anyway, this is the version that the council adopted in terms of housing by income, various income bands. And you can see on the left side, there are the cities and then the unincorporated area, what the total number that we are supposed to be planning for look like 103,000 new units plus in the next 20 years. And you can see how that breaks out in terms of the average median income. That's what is meant by various income bands. So you can see what each of the cities and the unincorporated Clark County is supposed to plan for. And if we can go to the next slide, it will show you also the adopted employment allocations. I don't have to go in depth about this, but what this shows is that the current capacity is about 66 or 65,000 jobs. And we are planning for give or take 88,000 and there's a difference of about less than 20,000 that we have to plan for. Next slide, please. When we talk about possible alternative, there could be more than three. But anytime it's more than three or four, it's very expensive to do. Typically, you have three land use scenarios. One is given your current plan or existing plan. So we call that no action alternative. But what that means is, okay, if we were to adopt the existing plan as is, and I show you the population allocation and jobs, can we fit that within the existing plan? That's what this no action alternative is supposed to analyze and tell us what the potential area is a go, is a no go, or here are the, what you need to do to accommodate that growth. The second alternative, we're calling that county initiated alternative. That could just be what would happen in the unincorporated area of the Vancouver UGA and the rural area. Because the rural area is part of the unincorporated area of the county. And then you have city requested action or city proposed land use scenario. So those are the, and it could be a combination, if I may. County initiated action with the city can be one alternative or we can look at it individually. So, but typically we do, in the past, we've done three and more than three. I believe the last time we did up to four and then I still narrow it down to the preferred plan. But typically you get three land use scenarios done under the SEPA rules. Next slide, please. I will then turn this over to Jose who will walk you through the land use alternative as submitted by our local jurisdiction. And I know they also go in through their own processes. So this is all preliminary. We will do our best to answer any question that you may have. And by the time you go, we get to a hearing, I know that our city partners will come and testify, provide you comment one way or the other. So let me turn this over to Jose. Unless you have questions for me.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Long time no see. What I was going to do is give you a high-level overview of the land use alternatives that the different jurisdictions have submitted up to this point. Mostly keep hearing about using the word draft, so. So these are drafts from the jurisdictions. I will just go to the map. I think it's gonna be a better visual. So this is the first proposal from the city of Battleground. You can see the red areas here. They're proposing to extend to the west, heading towards Dollar's Corner. The areas outlined in red are the expansion areas that they're proposing. They received some site specific requests that weren't received by the county individually. And so they're considering that in their alternative. The couple of things about this, they're proposing to essentially swap their areas within the UGA, this area to the southeast, southwest here is currently in the urban growth area. They're proposing to remove this area from their urban growth area and expand to the west for employment as opposed to residential. The other area in the southeast corner here, there's a parcel that is split zoned and the southeastern portion of that is actually ag. And that's the only, it's about 20 acres. That's the only portion of ag that they're proposing. And this is, this westward expansion was something that they've went through a planning process in 2021. And that was what came out of that planning process. And so they're looking at bringing this forward as part of the comp plan because they couldn't make that amendment at that time. You had to wait for the discount plan process. Do you want to ask questions as we go?
So as I recall, Battleground tried to go, is that what you're saying? When they tried to go to the west and then that was rejected, is that correct? Remember in the last one, we, they, and they said, no, you can't do that. Was that because of what you just said there? They didn't have their process down or they're a?
Not sure that was.
It wasn't that far, but I thought it was just a little bit to the west and then?
And I think at that point in 2016, there wasn't, they couldn't show the need for expansion for residential development is what it was. Right, so they had so much population to allocate for and their existing UGA could accommodate that. So they couldn't make the case for the need for expansion.
Thanks. So, oh, this sounds like it's working better. So you mentioned at the beginning of the, of the talk that some site specific requests from the jurisdictions are being included in the DEIS. Can you give me an example of that? Or is that buried into this overlay, this map?
Yeah, so for Battleground's not the best example, but they did get site specific requests. These areas outlined in red where individuals requested to be included in the UGA. And so they incorporated that in their alternatives. So there are, when the county receives site specific requests, we shared those with the jurisdictions for the jurisdictions to determine whether it made sense for them to include those site specific requests within their alternatives. And so that's really the, the site specific requests are an opportunity for anyone to, to submit for a change. But yeah.
Started with the request was to the county and the county sent it to Battleground in this case. And then they Battleground included it in there. Okay.
I had just a broad, broad question. So I, I know we're, this is a draft, right? And I, and I'm not sure where you guys are in the process of analyzing what they are proposing in regards to what we've allocated to them. So can you just explain a little bit of that process of where we are in it? And, and what's the path forward for that?
Presentation, but at the high level, we've been receiving the alternatives from the jurisdictions. Not as quickly as we'd like, but we understand each jurisdiction is going through their own process. So as we receive these requests, and I think the next map will be sort of a better example. So this is from the city of Camas. And they've provided this map of what they're essentially looking at. This includes some areas where they're looking at rezoning areas within their existing UGA, where these sort of hatch marks are. And in this alternative one, the only expansion they're having is for the inclusion of the airport, which is this area in blue. Some of these designations, we don't have, they haven't provided us specific zoning for. So we can't put that in our VBLM model and get an estimate of capacity. So that's one of the jurisdictions we're waiting for that level of detailed information. Most of the jurisdictions have provided that level of detailed information. We're waiting for that from, I just got something this morning from, from Camas. And we're still waiting for some of that information from the city of Vancouver. So we're, it's, we're, we're in process. It's a very fluid environment. And as we're getting the information, we're getting some, we'll be able to get some estimates of capacity that will share with the jurisdictions to let them know where they are based on the model of whether they're, can accommodate the, the allocated housing and employment.
I don't know how long, but, but basically they will, they will propose, propose a plan. And then, then you will put that in the thing and they say, well, you are missing this mark or you're?
Partially, so we're, we're, we're gonna give them feedback on what their capacities are. We need to have hearings and take this to the next stage. So there might be some iterations where there's maybe exceed their allocation that goes forward for the, for the analysis. But knowing that they may need to rein that back in order to actually meet those, the allocation projections. So it gives them some flexibility before there gets to be a final preferred decision. Any other questions? Okay, so the, the other, the other item is that some jurisdictions have submitted two alternatives. In this case, Battleground has submitted, Camas has submitted a second alternative. Yeah, so the second alternative from Camas, similar to the first, but with two additional expansion areas appear on the north side, where it says residential high UGA expansion. And that is currently land that's designated forest. So it's resource land. And then on the southeast quadrant, this area is all agricultural designated land. So this is in their alternative two, in addition to the airport expansion and the changes with, within their UGA. La Centre also has two alternatives. You'll be able to see those. So again, the area outlined in red is where they're proposing expanding the UGA. So that's here on the south, southwest corner. And just to the north of that, for in this alternative for industrial, and I believe that's commercial. And so they've got additionally some changes in zoning within the UGA. You can see by the hash marks. And then in the alternative two, just sort of keep your eyes on these areas. You'll see in the second alternative, that area that was commercial on the north side is, looks like a higher density residential. The industrial stays the same. I think some of the, the, the higher density residential has gone away in, in some, in some of alternative two. So there's less of changes within the existing UGA and their second alternative. Richfield, again, the area outlined in red is expansion of the UGA. This area to the north is all, well, all of the expansions in Richfield in this outlined in red are ag designated. And they're also showing some increases and changes within, of zoning within their existing urban growth area. And this, they also have two alternatives. The same expansion areas, they just have different designations. And it looks like in the second alternative, they don't have as much change in the, in this middle here for their changes within the existing urban growth area. But a little more in, on the west side. Vancouver is, I think, more conceptual at this point where they're looking at sort of kind of consolidating their different zones. They are one of the jurisdictions that, there's three jurisdictions that are affected by House Bill 1110, which is going to require jurisdictions, in particular Vancouver, any residential zone property is gonna have to allow up to a fourplex. And if you're within a quarter mile of transit that's at 15 minute intervals, up to a sixplex. So there are new regulations from the state that are gonna be, that are gonna impact the city. So they're taking a pretty broad look at how they're gonna accommodate the population going forward. And I know that they are still working on getting more detail about what these zones and densities look like. And so we're still waiting to get that level of detailed information from them. But they provided two essentially conceptual maps of how they would accommodate that. So this is unincorporated Vancouver UGA that sort of county staff has been working on, where we've looked at as part of the housing action plan, we've adopted changes to our urban low density residential zones, which increase the density in some of those zones. So what we're proposing is to increase the density in our urban medium and urban high zones. Right now, the urban medium zone is arranged from 12 to 22 units per acre. R12 to R22, we're proposing that go to, from R22 to R40. And then our urban high, that is currently R30 and R43, go to R45 and R50. So this map just shows those areas that are currently, those urban medium and urban high with the new designations. The other thing that we've done here is in that Highway 99 corridor, within the existing subarea plan, the plan allows for residential development in that corridor. For a lot of that, there's no maximum density in that. But the, sort of the floor of the density was that R12. So we are proposing to raise the floor on that and actually account for residential growth in our model. Our model up to this point hadn't accounted for any employment or any residential in that Highway 99 area. It still has commercial zoning for the most part in that corridor. So the model was treating that at all as employment land at 20 jobs per acre. So in the next slide, you're gonna see some proposed increases in sort of expansion of some density in some certain areas and also expansions of the UGA to the north and just to the east of WSU to add Business Park. In, when we made some adjustments essentially in the Highway 99 corridor and revisiting how we treat mixed use, it caused reduction in our employment capacity. So we're proposing to expand the urban growth area to recoup some of the losses of employment lands that were as a result of those changes. Any questions on this?
If I may, thank you, Jose. Before planning commission members get into questioning, this is Oliver Ojaka again. Commissioner Walden, you asked question about the site specific request. I know Jose may get into the different slide on the site specific request. So you can see where they are and how some of them have been considered in what we are showing you. You may not see that in this map, but when you go to the actual site specific request, you can see that majority of those that are inside the urban growth boundary, some of them have been incorporated. By that, I mean, some of them, some of the requests have been, I would say granted, but considered because it is the planning commission and the council that will be making the final decision. The other thing that I will say is that, and I can speak for the county unincorporated area here. And I'm sure my city partners will agree. When we did the first scoping of the EIS work, we had from the public, if you recall, we shared the result of that open house with you. There are some, we considered those recommendations or suggestions in the preparation of this scenario. The other thing we considered is there is, and Jose will get into this shortly, there are some requirement in the growth management act in sizing of urban growth boundary on what you're supposed to do first. And Jose mentioned some of these new bill that have been passed. While it's not particular to Clark County, we are. While it's not particular to Clark County, we are literally managing an urban area, if you will. So indirectly, we are supposed to adhere to the new bills that were passed, like House Bill 1220. House Bill 1110 doesn't really pertain to the county, but the recent changes that the county, you planning commissioners made on the housing code work and the council adopted pretty much gets us closer to those bills that were passed. And the other thing was that we have in our own county policy that if you were to expand your bank road boundary, that the likely candidate area you have to consider is areas that you have had as urban reserve for a very long time. So when you look at the areas that we were considering in terms of boundary expansion, there are the urban reserve areas. Not all of the urban reserve areas are in, but those are the likely candidate areas that we considered in terms of urban growth boundary expansion. Because some of those urban reserve have been urban reserve and passed over for quite some time. So we are going back and adhering to the county policy that you have to look at the urban reserve first. So let me stop there and have Jose continue unless you have questions.
Question, were you just talking about Clark County or were you talking about municipal cities too? Are you talking about the urban overlays?
I'm talking about the unincorporated area of
Just the unincorporated.
Yeah, because some of the other cities doesn't have urban reserve.
So this is Jeremy Baker. So I had, like, in totality, we're getting these two presentations, and so I'm kind of thinking, how do, how do they fit together, right? So Chris gave us the the tip update, the transportation improvement update. And so we're, and when we're making our decisions, like, so when you were talking about moving the the urban growth boundary in or by WSU. So my thought, my, my question is this, is how does the, the urban growth boundary you alternative use plans get implemented and then and how does the tip respond to that? And so to kind of get to what Carl was asking prior to, how do we prevent us deciding that we're going to build over here, but we don't have the infrastructure to adjust it? Could you explain that process to me a little bit?
Sure. So when say, for example, the council decides to bring in an area that's currently outside the urban growth boundary, as part of this process, we'll look at capital facilities later in this process to see what infrastructure we need to serve these areas. And then we'll sort of, if that infrastructure is not available, what we typically do is put what's called urban holding overlay on those areas so that it can't be developed at urban standards until the infrastructure is in place to accommodate it. Which is sometimes, if it's with funded within six years, and that's why sometimes we have a disconnect between development happening and the projects not being physically in place, but the funding is in place to build them.
So basically, you're explaining to me is that since this is a 20 year plan to going up up to 2045, so if the infrastructure is not in place yet, we put a hold on that while the other areas get developed. In the meantime, we develop a new plan and then come together. Okay, thank you.
A new, a new 20 year capital facilities plan will be prepared as part of this update. What Chris was showing you is based on the current plan that we have in place. So additional areas, if we do expand, we will identify additional infrastructure and what will be needed in the future. I know that my good friend is sitting down, so he can also answer that question, but yes.
Yeah, make sure this mic works. Yeah, Ken Later, again, Public Works Director. I would just add that, again, the capital facilities plan is that 20 year look, but you see in our tip is our six year program where we're looking at what's more needed in the in the near years and then projecting out. So you'll see on on our plan, pretty far out, our 72nd Avenue, and that's what we're just starting to get into as far as preliminary engineering and some of the projects that have been on the capital facilities plan for a while would be further out yet, so.
So there's some overlap here, right? Because you have to plan for your infrastructure prior to us having the comprehensive plan. And so that's, that's why this 2025 to 2030 is being proposed right now. And then it'll be adjusted, there'll be a separate 20 year plan that's part of this process that.
And yeah, so the the capital facilities plan is separate, but but it feeds what we put into our six year plan and ultimately what's in our one year or annual construction plan that Chris was showing you earlier.
Thank you.
Great questions, Jeremy. Thank you.
I saw that Commissioner Burkhold had his hand raised. Do you have any questions at this point?
That was just to let you know I was here. My apologies.
All right. So before I move off this map, the only other thing I was going to say about the Vancouver unincorporated areas that a lot of the, because we needed to increase density, the areas that we looked at were along Highway 99, Hazel Dell, where there's, we're going to have new high capacity transit service that's projected to go up that corridor. We've engaged a little bit with the C-Trans about their facility on Hazel Dell Avenue, where they have a park and ride, but 10 acre property to see if they're looking at doing any transit oriented development. I know they're looking at that on in Vancouver on the east side. So we've had some preliminary discussions about those types of things. And then sort of really focused on trying to increase the density in those corridors where there's the the capacity and infrastructure would be in place to handle that. All right, so next is the city of Wausau. They have one expansion area on this northeast corner. And that is for, I think, for school and then some residential between the existing urban growth boundary and that parcel. They've also had a, a planning project that they undertook, they completed at the end of the, the last time we updated this plan in 2016. And so outside of the existing urban growth area, what's in urban holding, where they were looking at changing some of the zoning in that area to accommodate the growth for the next 20 years. And so they've kind of already gone through that process previously, but it hadn't been incorporated into the plan till now. And then finally is Yakult, and they are proposing urban growth boundary expansion on the north side, northeast part of the UGA and here to the south. And I know that they are, part of this is, they may be losing some of their industrial parks, open space, that's part of the county's national program that Kevin's running. So they're in discussions with county about purchasing some of that property. And so that's why they included some of these, that area to the, to the south there, a portion of it.
Jose, before you continue, I think I want to correct myself because I misspoke. This is Oliver again. In the town of Yakult, they do have urban reserve. That's still one of the only cities that I'm aware of that has urban reserve, answering your question, planning commission call. So all these areas that the town of Yakult is considering for inclusion in the urban growth boundary are already in urban reserve.
Okay, so we added this table, and this essentially shows you the summary of the expansion request by UGA and zoning. So for each of the UGA, so Battleground, like I mentioned, they, 20 acres of ag is part of their expansion. Most of it is that rural five for their move to the, to the west. Just thinking about this now, so this is just expansion, so it's not a net, it doesn't subtract out from their expansion what they're removing from their UGA. So the overall, the number would be less than the 764 because of that swap, but so I just wanted to point that out. Again, Canvas, their alternative one is really just the airport, about 78 acres. And then for the alternative two, it's about, it includes the additional 161 acres of ag and 57 acres of forest.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, because I think I understood you, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear. But when you were talking about they're changing the zoning from rural five and they're making that denser, so when it goes to the number, once people look at it and they say they're, they're expanding 764 acres, it's not they're expanding 764 acres, they're just changing the zoning of the 511 acres in, that's already part of the urban growth boundary.
It's not, it's not part of the urban growth boundary yet. No. Yeah.
Okay, that's, I was just trying to get clarity on that. Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so these are all expansions of the existing urban growth boundary. Again, La Center, 110 acres in both of their alternatives. And Ridgefield, that it's all ag and it's a little over 400 acres. Our unincorporated area is about 350 acres for that employment. Wausau is the 48 acres for that school site, and then the properties intervening that would be residential. And Yakult's about 90 acres. So this total 700 acres of ag, I didn't double count, so it's for the unique numbers of ag. So that's what the summary of expansion requests are by acres for UGA and zoning. And then the next one will be what we've received in site specific requests, and I'll show you that map. You have any questions before?
This is Jeremy Baker again. So when the cities make their request, do they look at specific, like, we're losing 700, like, we're proposing to remove 700 acres of agriculture? I mean, some agricultural land is better than others. Is that part of the process? Or is it just, we think that we'd like to grow, grow here instead of over there?
That's a good question, Jeremy. This is Chris Cook, and analysis of the de-designation, that's what they call it, that's an invented word, the analysis of the de-designation of resource land and bringing that into an urban growth boundary. That is something that the law in Washington requires be done by analyzing the resource industry in the county as a whole and looking at the effects of de-designation or, you know, in the case of Battleground, well, the swap doesn't deal with any, any resource land. But you have to, you have to look at the effects on the industry as a whole of what is being proposed. That's, it's kind of a tall order. I, I don't know that that has successfully been done in the state since that rule became effective. So we'll see how it goes.
Is, I mean, is it, is it part of like, when they're, like, some agriculture's land is actually actively being used as agricultural land and some, some land is not actively, is that part of the calculation when they're trying to figure out what, how will it impact the industry?
In general, no. You can't remove your land from suitability for agriculture by deciding not to manage it for agriculture. the land in the county was analyzed, you know, countywide in the 1990s, when the first comprehensive planning under the Growth Management Act was done. So essentially, the whole place was looked at. The comprehensive plans that have, the changes that have happened since then, the last set of changes was required to comply with that rule that the industry as a whole be viewed. And the Growth Management Hearings Board ruled in the case of every one of the changes that the county had not successfully done that. There were a number of additions to urban growth boundaries nonetheless, because cities quickly annexed the former agricultural areas before the Growth Board could rule that they shouldn't have been de-designated. And this was not the first time that that annexation had occurred in an attempt to, you know, get things fixed in a particular way before the Growth Board could rule. And as a consequence, the state legislature changed the law so that if resource land is brought into an urban growth boundary, that change is not effective until, and it's appealed, the change isn't effective until after the decision. So if the decision is that that was invalid and so forth, it won't be affected, it can't, can't be the subject of a development application.
Thank you for that.
This is Carl Johnson. Jose, do we know roughly what, how much agricultural acres, acreage do we have in the county? Do you know that offhand roughly? Or is that just?
29, 30,000.
And Chris, can you remember, wasn't the, the court hearing on ag and forest, right? The last, the last one, we, we were?
We didn't bring in any forest last time, but yeah, a number of properties north of Ridgefield were brought into the urban growth boundary. They were all ag, they're adjacent to the areas that are proposed for addition now. And likewise, some ag was brought into La Center. The battleground expansion was rural, that wasn't ag, but that was ruled improper by the Growth Board on account of no need, as Oliver explained. So there's, there's land inside the city limits of Ridgefield now that was ag before our 2016 comp plan change. And the Growth Board ruled that that had been improperly brought in. However, it was annexed. And, you know, once something is within a city boundary, the county can't decide what its land use is going to be. And so in court, I was able to argue that the question was moot because it didn't make any difference what the Growth Board thought about it. The county couldn't do anything about it. So as I say, the legislature has removed that, the ability to annex that land quickly and to make that argument.
Okay, let me go to the map of the site specific requests. Okay. All right. So this is the map of the site specific requests we've received. The orange dots are requests to be included in urban growth areas. The, these green dots, the lighter green are for zone changes outside of the urban growth area. So some of these are ag to R5. A lot of this is surface mining overlay in these areas. And then again, a lot of ag or forest to R5 or R5 to one acre zone that we don't have outside of a rural center. And then the darker blue-greenish are the proposed zone changes within the existing urban growth boundaries. And most, I think all of these were within the Vancouver UGA. There's one in Ridgefield that I think was sort of a sliver of a property that's associated with a property that's outside the urban growth area. So within the UGAs, so as we, so since most of these were within the urban growth area, when we were looking at the land use alternative for the unincorporated area, we, we looked at those and considered those as potential, you know, to see if it aligned with where we were going. Some of the proposals were going in opposite direction where there was mixed use zone property that was requesting to be urban low density residential. And so that's not going to help with what we were trying to accommodate with sort of increase in density or the, the, the income bands where the mixed use already has an urban medium to an urban high zoning density. So going in that direction would be going in the wrong, wrong way. So we wouldn't have considered those as part of our.
This goes back to the assumptions that we made when we were talking about the land use where there's underutilized and undeveloped land. Like, so if what you're saying is if, because we assume that there's a certain amount of undeveloped and underdeveloped land that's going to be developed how we want. And so what you're saying, you're, you're looking at the site specific requests and seeing how that fits into our goals of?
Not so much that. So if you had a, someone who owns 40 acres and they're in the urban growth boundary, but they're zoned mixed use, which that allows for, you know, a mix of uses of 80 to 20% residential, commercial. For the most part, we see residential development at 80% at a density of between 12 and 43 units per acre. We wouldn't, it makes no sense for us to consider rezoning that to R110 or R15.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jose, this is Eldon. You mentioned about a surface mining overlay.
Right.
There, there are some properties that are included in the site request that are surface mining overlay or they want to change the surface?
They are asking for a surface mining overlay to be placed on their property.
Ouch.
Yeah.
So, so just a general comment, surface mining overlays get a lot of attention?
Yes.
And I thought that there was a separate process for that outside of this.
This is Oliver again. You're correct. And those are some of the consideration that we took into, in reviewing the site specific requests. So all I can say is that you look at this map, the site specific requests are all over the place with varying requests. Some of them fall outside of what we can do. And, and that is why we are letting the cities and the public see all the site specific requests and what they are and what folks are requesting. If you were to consider all of them, they will fall outside of the target and the direction that we have been given.
I was just surprised because I was reading through the comments that we've received already. And there's quite a few saying, what? Surface mining overlay? And there was about half a dozen comments sent feedback on that. I was just surprised.
Well, the other, we had a site specific request for addition of surface mining. That's on the property that's under appeal that already has surface mining. So again, so I'll switch back over to the presentation and I think I've got a sort of high level summary of what categories in acreage these fall into.
Jose, pardon me. If the commissioners would like to take a look at the site specific requests or if the public would like to, where can that be easily found?
Well, the presentation that's posted on the webpage, if you click on this link, it'll take you to that map. Sorry, Jeff. And then you can look at these and when you zoom in on them, it will tell you what the request was, who's requesting it, the property owner, the parcel number and the acreage. So there's a lot of detailed information in that.
Yeah. And Oliver, again, if you don't use this presentation, you can also go on the, on our project webpage on the growth plan update. If you click on that, it takes you to site specific requests. You click on it, you get you to this map as well.
Okay, so the, essentially we had 136 unique requests. There are over 300 parcels. There's total acres of ag zone requests, about 4,700 acres, 33 or a little over 3,000 of forest zone. And then the other category, which is like the R5 and surface mining, I believe is the 4,000. And all the other categories. If you compare these two tables, there's some requests that were that were not included in what the, what the cities proposed. Think of, I think a portion of the airport property that the port of Camas Washugal owns, that's the easternmost property, that's a finger that kind of sticks out. That wasn't included in their proposal, but was in site specific request. I think there's a couple in, between Ridgefield and La Center where the requests were just a little further out. So they weren't, they weren't part of the jurisdictions request. What we included, these citations, RCW and WAC, I think is Oliver, Oliver mentioned earlier, these are sort of the guidance for how to accommodate growth as you're doing your urban, you're looking at your UGAs and how to accommodate the growth that's projected. And a lot of it is looking at revisiting the zoning and the densities within the UGAs and trying to accommodate that as part of redevelopment or urban infill. And so that's kind of the direction is to look in that, those areas first. Sometimes you're not, you're just not able to accommodate that and you would need to expand your urban growth areas. And then within that, the, the last thing that you should look at is expanding into resource land. And that's the last, the WAC 365, the agricultural resource designation.
And that would also apply to going from ag to rural to R5 or something like that.
I can't remember, but do we literally have to go through all of the site specific outside of the cities? Are, are all those just going to be wrapped into? So all the site specific requests, correct? There's a lot of them, right? That are, how's that going to work? Are we going to go through those or are we just going to say, okay, rely on the staff that?
I think in 2016, if they fell within the proposals of the, what the jurisdictions proposed, they were included. If they weren't, we sent them letters that they weren't going to be included.
Okay, so we're just, we're just talking whether they'll be included in this discussion, not?
At this point, we're looking at what's going to be included in the draft environmental impact statement.
All right.
I, I think that in 2016, the council determined that it would not take site specific requests that, no?
Nope. That is not correct.
That's, that's a myth.
We receive them, we catalog them, and if they fit, they did. And there weren't very many expansion, there wasn't much expansion. But there were requests that we didn't entertain.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yep.
And we are following the same process. The cities are considering some, we are considering some that are inside the existing UGA that if we believe based on the input from the public when we did the scoping, at some point, we will also be going out to the public to share with them what the land use scenarios look like. And that will give them the opportunity to also know that A, their property is not included. B, they can still continue to testify or submit comment before you and the council. I want to emphasize too, that on the last bullet here relating to resource designation, we have, when I say we, that is county staff has advised the cities and the proponents of adding ag resource or forest designated land into the UGB that they have to go through the process of the designation analysis, as Chris indicated. So they are aware of that. Whether that would be sufficient, I cannot tell you. But for now, I cannot effectively tell you, A, I have reviewed that it's good to go. Or B, I haven't reviewed or I have reviewed it, I don't think it made the test. I cannot say that. So, but we have asked them to work with their requests to do that analysis, looking at the implication of removing that from resource and the overall ag or forest industry in Clark County. So that, our local jurisdiction and the requests are aware of that.
So this is Jeremy Baker again. So the, 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 the staff, the county uses their experience and, and Chris's experience of having to go and defend these things and how, and what the, the board is going to say. Like, so we use those experiences when we go into, when we're recommending land use alternatives. It's like, like this is a red flag. If, if we make this, this may or may not, this more than likely won't be allowed. And so we're going to, we don't want to step in those traps. We want to try to mitigate that. Is that what, are we using that experience from past plans?
I think we're trying to share that information with the jurisdictions and let them know what.
It's, it's up to them to, to decide whether they want to go for it or not. But we, we are giving them the opportunity to think about it.
I, I think if the, we've asked the cities and assume that the cities are asking the proponents or however they wish to do it to present to the county the justification for adding resource parcels to the urban growth area. If the county were to be responsible for that analysis, that would very likely be extremely time consuming and expensive. So in general, the proponent of, you know, a comp plan decision has to justify that. And that's continuing here.
Just because I don't understand, like I've never been through this process. And so I'm just trying to understand a little bit better. So when they take it, when they take it, the, the city goes, I want to, I want to take this 500 acres of agricultural land. And then a portion of that gets denied. But is that, have we already approved our comprehensive plan at that point? Because I would imagine that stuff takes time. Nope. We can't approve the plan until it's been basically decided whether it can be used or not.
I, I think what you're asking is, so if a jurisdiction, so jurisdictions propose the UGA boundaries and the county ultimately decides?
Yeah, the county is the decider on, on urban growth boundaries.
So historically, if the county has decided yes, it's okay to bring in that ag land. We end up defending that decision in court. But once that's adopted, it's not that we weigh whether it's, I think your question was whether we wait to see if it's adjudicated and it's approved. That decision is made and is presumed to be valid. And then we get appealed. And then that's when we go through the, the legal course.
So then we'd make a, like if it does, if the legal course says that it can't be used, then we make adjustments to the plan later on.
Yes. Remand.
In the case of Battleground with the last plan, you know, they proposed the addition of a bunch of R5 land and the county agreed to that. After the Growth Board ruled that that was not proper, Battleground withdrew its request for an expansion. So that one was kind of, you know, we didn't do anything to them. They said, okay, we tried, but, but it's not a go.
And agreeing with Chris and Jose, and getting to your question too, if, and I don't know what the council is going to do, but. don't know what the council is going to do, but whatever they do, if they do allow inclusion of ag into the UGB, and if it's appealing, the past, we have labeled some of these areas, VB, VC, whatever, and at the end of the day, the court says, oh, VCB needs to come out, or VCB whatever needs to come out, then we go through the process to say that area comes out and we go through that process until such a point where we come into compliance, what you may call compliance. And I assume, because some have said, well, this is going to be litigated, other than that have that be litigated if you, if you, if you will. I'm not the one making the decision. All I'm saying is that the other thing we have to do is that these submittals are preliminary. Why do I say that? We have not really getting the, what's the density, what is the land use from the cities they're beginning to submit that? We are going to go through an iteration process. What does that mean? If we run the VBLM to say, okay, here's how much, or here's the capacity based on what you submitted, if that is above what is allocated to you, you have to do some tinkering within your, what you submitted to see how you narrow that down. Because A, we cannot by law go beyond the population that you're planning for. You made, the council have already made that decision. They can't unring that. They've already made a decision on the employment to plan for. We cannot go above that. So we're going to be back and forth with our local jurisdiction to say, okay, here's what you submitted, here's what the analysis is showing, you know? And I'm not saying we're going to disagree or they're going to disagree with us, we're just going to show our work. And, you know, some of this is going to be based on assumptions, but at the end of the day, we have to be consistent with what I'm calling the control total, which is the county controlled total.
I think Mark had a question.
Yeah, this is Mark Porfeld. Following up on that, but yeah, going back to site specific, is the county going to adopt a similar approach in the site specifics that are in the unincorporated areas, maybe specifically North County? Or is that a loaded question?
It's a good question, Planning Commissioner Mark. Here's what's going to happen in the unincorporated area because we have a proposal to expand your urban growth boundary. Some of the areas are zone rural 5, for example. So we are going to look at the growth that we have been, the growth that we are signing to the rural area, because the rural area is going to continue to grow over the next 20 years, but that growth is going to be dependent on what the current zoning is. What do I mean by that? You have a variety of densities in the rural area, rural 5, let me start with rural 1, 1 acre, 2 and 1/2 if you're in the rural center. You have 5 acres, you have 10 acres and then you have 20, 40 and 80. So if I have 20 acres and I'm zone rural 5, I can further subdivide my property and get 4 lots. So we are going to look at what is the potential, if I were to further subdivide my property, what is the potential additional lot that I can create for home site? So when you are looking at expansion of the urban growth boundary to those rural areas that are rural 5 or whatever, you are shrinking the opportunity of how many additional lot that could be created. So the way we are going to look at the site specific areas in the rural part of the county is if we were to consider the expansion that impacts some of the rural 5 or whatever, and we do an analysis of the potential additional lot that can be created based on what is left, do we have sufficient lot? If that were to happen, it's going to be beyond assumption, because it doesn't mean that I'm going to further subdivide my property, but if you assume that that will occur, then this is the potential number of additional lot that could create. If that number is below the growth that we are locating to the rural area, then we can look at those rural 20 to 5 or whatever the case may be, to make sure that if we are locating 5% to the rural area, there is indeed sufficient lot to accommodate that. That's how we look at those. If at the end of the day, there is still sufficient lot to accommodate the growth allocated, right now is 5% of the total. So if the outcome is, yeah, there is additional lots out there, there is no need making changes to any of the requests. They could come back after the comp plan is adopted and you, you guys see plan amendment and so forth, that's how this is going to occur.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions?
Got two more slides.
Oh, you have two more slides.
We're almost there.
Almost there.
The next steps. So essentially, we've been working with the jurisdictions to confirm the accuracy of the mapping. They've sent maps to us. We've had our GIS staff digitize those, send it back to them to make sure it's accurate. You can see in some of the maps, they're sort of similar in style and nature. Those are the ones that we've digitized and sent back to them. Some of the others, we're still waiting on some information from them. Once we get that, we'll run the VBLM on the proposed alternatives and get a sense of whether they're, the jurisdictions are able to, whether these alternatives can accommodate the growth, the housing and employment, and share that information with the jurisdictions as well. And then we can move into, maybe go into a hearing and hopefully in the next week, we'll be able to, to get that information and feel comfortable to schedule the, see, the Halloween edition of the planning commission. So.
Thank you, Jose, and I know planning commission members may have a question. This is Oliver again. We had a meeting with our city partners early this morning today and we are pressing them to provide us what I may call a narrative of the proposal that they have submitted so that that will give us some idea of the land use scenarios in terms of zoning, because it's all conceptual now and we need to firm things up so that we can be able to run the VBLM with our GIS staff. We don't run it, we have our GIS staff, they do the work so that we can then share that information with our local jurisdictions. And I'm hoping, you hear me say that we are running behind, we are really, and we are pressing the cities to get that, ask that information so that we can run the model and share the same information with them. I'm looking at, if everything lines up, I'm looking at asking you for a special hearing this month, could be, yeah, Halloween night, we'll spend it here. So stay tuned. I know some of my city partners are online and again, this is informational, here's where we are to date and hopefully we'll get to a point where we can come to a hearing and also have opportunity to share with the larger public what and where we are.
That is all.
Okay, thank you. So we have comments or questions from the planning commission. So next week, we're not, or excuse me, on the 17th or whenever our next hearing is, we're just doing tip, is that it? So that'll be relatively quick then, yeah. Okay, so we're not, this is not, yeah, I was going to say, that's a big one to chew. All right. So Oliver, do you have anything else, like generally speaking, for the planning commission?
No.
Cool news?
No, I, no, not today, maybe I'll talk with you offline here. Not, not today, but I'll talk with you offline.
Sure. Gentlemen, questions? Comments? Good to see everybody again. Thank you.
I just, I just had a little comment though, because this, this time is being compressed for this jurisdictions to come up with their final and then to have a hearing. I, I just have, I just have a feeling that the public really has no idea that all this is happening, because a lot of these changes that the jurisdictions are going to ask for are going to change the look of that jurisdiction. And I'll give you an example, you know, I live close to Yakal and somebody in Yakal posted the map that was shown on here on the Facebook discussion page and a flood of negative comments came up. And a lot of them are saying, what, what's going on? We don't want Yakal to grow, blah, 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 blah. I mean, and that's why we got so many letters from Yakal residents against what's being proposed from the town. So I just have a feeling that in this compressed time, when we have that public hearing, if that's the only way that public's going to get to comment, it's going to be a, a long meeting.
I will say this, the last update was extremely contentious.
Yeah, well, this one will be too.
But it was, this is better. And I mean it because former council, there weren't councillors, but before that, and just how it went about, and it was. And I don't think you're going to get around it being not contentious. I mean, it went to litigation. So my hope is, is that people participate in it as best they can. And yeah, I don't think there's anything much we change about how this is, because it is a dense process. And I don't think people understand like what it really means. Like the surface mining overlay, you want to see something entertaining, these were opened up and this was packed from there to there. And I, I'm telling you, I get it, but I think we just encourage people to come either vent or whatever they're going to do and they get their time and.
And their, their written comments that can be sent in a variety of ways to planning are so welcome, you know? Anything that, that they, that the public has to say, of course, they have to know that something is happening in order to say something about it. I'm not sure how to cure that problem if you.
And that's my whole point. I, I don't think 98% of the public have no idea that this is happening.
I, I wouldn't say I disagree with you. All I can say is that, and I'm not passing blame to our local jurisdictions, but they are going through the same process as we are. Some of them are having open houses, some of them are having meetings with their planning commission and council, sharing this. That's why we asked the cities a request to submit their proposal by the end of July and here we are. So, but it's taking them some time. Remember that the allocation also took some time. So there were, I don't know how many hearings at our council before we got the allocation completed. So I'm glad that we had the six months extension, but that is now closing. So I share your concern and Chris is correct. We are doing our best to let the public know that here's what is happening. I'm expecting the cities to also let their residents know what is being proposed and have them go to their, they have been hearings, they have been open houses. I will encourage them to attend. You know, I give credit to my staff for the way they presented the site specific request. We have published that through press release, provided the link, so at least people know what is being proposed. That is another way they will know that, hey, my neighbor made a request to expansion. We are getting tons of comment that you're not seeing, but we have, we are indexing them. At some point, they are going to come to you. Yeah, this is the time for, yeah, the public is saying, no, their comment that says no expansion into resources, they, they comment all over the place. So I share your concern and as I said earlier, at some point, we will have to go out to the public to also do a check in. Or when we did the scoping, here's what you said to us to consider, how close are we to what you are, what you said we should consider? Some of the comments, you can go back and read them, they were comment that said, no expansion of urban growth boundary. Yeah, 90% of them said, nope, no, no expansion, but we got requests for expansion. So you got to find a way to balance that, that's why we've got to go back and say, okay, what does this mean? Yep.
The reason I brought that up is just to make sure that all of our committee members realize that this is going to be a contentious meeting on those, those hearings and we should be prepared for it.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.